Good afternoon. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time you would please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing, tonight we have Dr. Robert Oliver of the Bastrop Bible Church will offer us an opening prayer this evening. Thank you for being here.
Creator God, we thank you for the families of our community. We pray for this board and for all our teachers, administrators, and families of this district.
Pray that the Spirit of the living God would guide them to a better understanding of your truth, your beauty, and your goodness. Bless these proceedings. May your peace and your wisdom be upon them all, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. All right, at this time, Mr. Edwards, would you please introduce our student speaker for this evening?
I sure will, and it's my pleasure to introduce everyone to our student speaker for the Character Education trait for July, which is patriotism. Troy Klaus, a soon-to-be fifth grader from Red Rock, and doesn't that sound good? Soon-to-be fifth grader at elementary, that's fantastic. Troy is a participant of the RISE program, robotics, and the coding club. This past year, he placed first in the UIL number sense. In his spare time, Troy loves to read and play his piano. When he grows up, he wants to either be a baker, is that correct, Troy? This is the best one, or a teacher. I was out there recruiting him just before the meeting to the teaching profession, but preferably, it says here, a teacher. So Troy, if you'll join us at the podium, please, and thank you again for being here.
Thank you. Patriotism. According to Wikipedia, patriotism is the love, devotion, and sense of attachment to one's country. To me, patriotism is helping our country, whether in good times or bad. Patriotic people are a group of selfless people that strive to make America a better country. How can we honor these generous people? Well, did you ever pause to think? How grateful am I to live in the United States of America? Think of all the time and hard work our patriotic citizens have devoted to our country. We should honor these brave men and women, especially those who have died. Imagine the sacrifice of time and life these people devoted to our country's well-being. By simply being grateful to these selfless patriots, we can honor them. So patriotism is not one feeling that you can give. You can give your love, devotion, and loyalty, but using these feelings to benefit your country's well-being. You need all of those feelings to show good patriotism. Patriotism is not a behavior you were born with. You need to earn the trust and respect of our countries by giving your love, devotion, and loyalty to America. Our country needs good patriots to show good patriotism. Without patriotism, our country would not be whole and thriving correctly. We need patriotism. Again, patriotism is the love, devotion, and loyalty one gives to their country. Patriots show patriotism by helping their country, whether in war or peace. We can use our patriots as role models to better our country. Everyone should have patriotism in order to have a good, thriving country. Thank you all for listening. God bless America.
Wow, Troy, that was so well said. Thank you. We do have a gift for you for preparing that for us and sharing your words. I'd also like you to introduce just your family that's here, because we know the Klaus family. He said, "My whole family"? I said, "No, not your whole family, just the ones that are sitting here." So if you would, Troy, introduce who's with us.
Okay. My mom is in the dress. My dad is holding my baby sister, Lacy. There are my three brothers. Their names are Colt, Weston, and Luke.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. And who else is here with you, who's sitting over there in the other dress?
There is my grandma and Patsy Trigg, y'all should probably know.
That's what I was trying to get at, Grandma and Patsy, yes. Yes, we do. And if you fall in her footsteps, we are all set for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Looks like we have no one that signed up for open forum, is that correct? All right, that'll move us into our superintendent report and board discussion, curriculum report, introduction of the 2022 If What Accountability. Heather Christie, Director of Accountability and Correct, well, thank you for being here.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow, for sure. All right, good evening, Board President, Mr. Edwards, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to bring you a midsummer update regarding our accountability ratings. As we get started, I want to provide a couple of reminders that provide context for the information tonight. During the spring and the summer, we've been going through two significant events that are having a big impact on our accountability. One is, is that we gave a new version of STAR for the first time this past spring. And second, our accountability system itself has been revised. So portions and how ratings are calculated have changed. So due to these two key events, we will not receive our 2023 accountability ratings until late September, almost six weeks later than when we normally receive them. So in fact, we don't even currently have STAR results for the majority of our students. So what I can share with you tonight is a summary of changes of our 2023 accountability system and a tool that TEA is providing to help with this transition. So as a reminder, our accountability system is part of Law of Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, and there it states that the purpose of our accountability system is to continuously improve student achievement, eliminate achievement gaps, and prepare students for post-secondary success. So here I'd like to outline by domain some of the key changes that are happening within the accountability system itself. So Domain One, which measures student achievement, there really isn't any change for elementary and middle schools. However, there is a significant change for our high schools in that they have a much increased standard for the college, career, and military readiness standards. And this is going to have an impact overall, because we see this standard for our high schools live throughout pretty much every domain in the system. For example, in Domain One, it's forty percent of Domain One. Domain Two, Part A, talks about student growth. And again, here we see a pretty significant change in the updated methodology. Previous, in the previous system, growth was really about a student making one year's growth. In the new system, it's really measuring did students grow a year plus? So they're looking for more than a year's growth. So again, overall, that's a pretty significant change. 2B, again, this is relative performance. So this looks at data from Domain One, but puts it within the context of a campus's socio-economically disadvantaged student group. So again, here we don't see many changes, or really any changes for elementary and middle schools, but that college, career, and military readiness indicator is fifty percent of this domain. So we see the impact of that change again here. And then Domain Three, closing the gaps, this probably has the biggest overall, so they pretty much completely restructured this domain. This domain is where it looks by student perform, or looks at student performance by student demographic groups. So one of the changes here is that the minimum size requirement for a student group to be part of the rating calculation reduced from twenty-five students to ten students. Another thing that this is, they restructured this domain to really focus now on the highest need groups rather than all of the student groups. And so what's measured now are the all-students group, the two lowest-performing ethnicity and race groups from the prior year, and a new group the state has identified as a high-focus group. So one thing that maybe hasn't changed quite so much is how they determine overall ratings. So just as a reminder here, the best domain score out of 1, 2A, and 2B counts for seventy percent of a campus's overall rating. And Domain Three always counts for thirty percent of the overall rating. However, another change is, is that, looking at the overall, is that regardless of what that seventy-thirty calculation comes out to be, if the individual scores for Domain One, 2, 2B, and 3, if three out of four of those are below seventy, then the highest the campus can earn is a sixty-nine, regardless of what that seventy-thirty calculation comes out. There's also some changes in district rating calculations. Previously, the district, basically, its rating was calculated as a K-12 campus. But now campuses are going to contribute to a district's rating at a weighted average, and that weighted average is based upon the percent of tested student population that's at that campus. So for example, CCHS will contribute twenty-one percent to the district's overall rating, because twenty-one percent of our tested student population in BISD is, their home is CCHS. BMS will contribute ten percent, because ten percent of our overall tested student population, that is their home, and CCE will contribute four percent. So you can kind of see how that, that will work across our campus bands. Okay, so we've talked about quite a few hefty changes that are occurring in the system. And because of the changes that we've just discussed, it really is not going to be possible to compare the 2022 rating that we received last August to the 2023 rating that we're going, that will be issued in late September. So we're right now hearing our commissioner speak often. His phrase right now is, means it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, just looking at those two ratings, because of these significant changes in the system itself. Another example of this is in the middle of this slide. It gives an example that a campus that may have earned an A rating in 2022, looking at their STAR performance, may look like they have increased performance, but their rating in 2023 may actually be a B because of the changes within the system. So to help provide districts a better comparison point for when our ratings do come out this fall, TA is providing the districts with what they call what-if reports. So they are taking our, what I call, old data at this point, from 2022, the same data that gave us the ratings back in August, last August, and running it through the new system to see what if. What would have happened had we had the new system last year? And that gives us information and helps us understand the system right now. It's also going to give us a better comparison point when our 2023 ratings do come out in September. I do want to note that the what-if ratings will not replace the ratings that campuses earned last year. They're just being given for informational purposes for this comparison point that we'll have. So again, these, the state is going to release final what-if versions when they release both to the district and publicly the state ratings in late September. And again, this is really what will allow us to be able to measure performance improvement across our campuses. Just another note, so again, the agency is just being very clear that they'll use this and they'll use these, or issue these 2022 what-if ratings with all of their public information when their ratings come out, and they'll be posted on TexasSchool.gov. So let's talk about the things that we started to do last the school year and that we're continuing our work on in this next school year moving forward, because we're always about increased student achievement here in Bastrop. So first, last year, we began and worked on the creation and publication of new math and literacy instructional frameworks grounded in research-based instructional strategies. Dr. Warford brought these to you back in the spring and talked to you about the task force work that we were doing to develop those, that was done with teacher collaboration. Based upon these new frameworks, decision was made, and we are excited about the implementation of new math and literacy curriculum that meets the criteria of high-quality instructional materials. There's lots of great things that are happening with this, a couple that I want to highlight here, is one of the things this curriculum change has allowed is tighter alignment of instructional resources in program areas such as multilingual and special education. Previously, students that were receiving supports in these classes might have to use different types of resources that didn't, that weren't as cohesive with what was maybe happening in their Tier One classroom instruction. We're now able to use these new resources across those other program areas, and so we're excited about the cohesiveness that it's going to be able to provide our teachers and our students. Secondly, is that it's going to allow teacher times more time to focus on the how of instructional delivery. We've heard from our campus leaders for a while that our teachers needed more time to talk about the how to deliver instruction, because they were spending a lot of time on the what, trying to find the right thing to use to deliver that. With this curriculum, they are provided the what. And so they're now going to be able to shift their collaborative team time into really focusing on the how of instructional delivery to make sure all of our students' needs are met. Another piece is that we've redesigned our professional development plan, and we're ensuring training for all necessary teachers on the new curriculum. We have a goal that one hundred percent of our literacy and math teachers will receive training on the curriculum before our students arrive in mid-August. So I've been providing updates to you through board updates about where we are. We started May 30th with that training, and we've trained a lot of our teachers, and so we're looking forward to continue to train our new hires in the coming weeks. Also, of course, it's not just going to end in August. We'll continue to provide support throughout the school year. We're going to have a continued focus on improved attendance, and we're also, this, this work is allowing us to have even more intentional and targeted support for our teachers. We've done some restructuring within our department, as well as refined the description of our instructional coaches, that is really going to be able to allow even more laser-focused support for teachers in the implementation of this new curriculum. So just to close this out here, reminder, some timelines, kind of right there in the middle of the slide, August 11th is when we'll receive the rest of the STAR results for our 3 through 8 students. And then there at the bottom highlighted is when we'll receive our ratings. Districts will receive it on September the 26th, and they'll be publicly released then, two days later, on the 28th. So that's all the information I have for you tonight. Are there any questions?
I was wondering, the size requirements, how many additional groups did that add to our district?
Um, yeah, so that's a great question. We did have, we did have a couple, it kind of depended upon the campus and the population that was on a particular campus, but we do see on some campuses maybe an additional group or two that's now being taken into consideration in that Domain Three that wasn't necessarily taken into consideration previously.
Okay, and just because I'm interested, Circa, what percentage does it contribute to our overall?
I would have to go back and look specifically to be able to do, but again, it's a smaller population and size, so it's, I want to say two to three percent, you know, around that, I can't remember the exact number, but it is, it's more in line with our elementary campuses than like our high school campuses because of the number of students that it serves.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, the what-if analysis, you said we performed it on our campus or no?
So the what-if reports are reports that are issued from the state.
Oh.
Yes, yes.
Have we gotten our results?
So we have preliminary results. Again, they said the final are going to come out when they release the ratings in August. So, but we've had, the accountability manual is still not final, because it's receiving public comment, and so they're not going to consider any of that final until they have the final accountability manual published, in case there's any changes to anything.
Thank you.
And Heather, I just want to clarify the communication of this. You did mention it would be posted on TexasSchool.gov?
Yes, ma'am.
And where else would parents and businesses, business owners and folks in the community be able to see this? Will we have BIS, will BISD be publishing some clarity on how this all came to be? And the what-if scenarios?
Yes, and those different types of things, yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
It's from the board.
Did they give you any hint about what one-plus-year progress looks like compared to the one?
There is, yes. And so it really is about looking at performance, the performance levels that we have. We have did-not-meets, approaches, meets, and masters. And so they're really looking for growth from one performance level to another now. And some of, in did-not-meets and approaches, they look at that a little differently, but in general, it's about moving kind of from one category of performance one year to the next category of performance the next year.
You're not having to skip two categories, like not skip, but go through two, okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
I just want to be sure I understand that we're waiting on final approval from TEA to be graded on this, right? Is that?
On our final accountability ratings? Correct.
Because they haven't approved the manual yet.
Right, well, so there's a couple of things that are, I guess, kind of leading to that. So again, we're talking, just to be clear, I want to make sure we're talking about kind of two different things. There's these what-if ratings, right, which are one parts, we have preliminary, we're waiting for final that will come. Our 2023 actual ratings won't come until the end of September. And really, the reason for that delay is because of the new test that was given in the spring. So anytime we have a new test, they, the work that they have to do to analyze that data is much more significant than when it's not the first year.
That's because they included a lot more essays.
Because they've included more essays and just looking at passing standards and those kinds of things. So it just takes them more time to analyze that data to actually produce our 2023 ratings. So that's why our 2023 ratings are delayed this year.
And if, I'm sorry, go ahead, Billy.
Do they have a name for the new test? Something catchy?
No, no, we belovedly call it HareSTAR 2.0. I don't know how official that is, but that's, that's what we refer to it around here, yeah.
And sorry, just one more thing, Heather. So I know you said you had some projections, so really, any projection information that can be passed on to the board when that's allowed would be great. I'd love to see that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move along to our Administrative Services and Human Resource Report, hiring update. Our presenter is Penae Leifer, Associate Superintendent in Administrative Services and Human Resources. Ms. Leifer, good to see you. It's been a while.
Good evening, Mr. Mootink, board members, and Mr. Edwards. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes of your time this evening to talk about some human resources updates, kind of the more fun things that we get to do in our department. I'm going to invite two partners up here to help me present. I have a great team that I work with. I have Jane Green-Gass, she is our Coordinator of Human Capital Development, and Diana Green, she is our Director of Human Resources. So we're going to tag-team through our presentation, kind of talk about the different things that we each do. So Jen's going to lead us off.
Oh, good. Hi. Good evening, how are y'all?
Good.
Okay, I'm not really good with the clicker, so, you know. All right, so we talk about our buckets in human resources, and they really fall into recruiting, equipping, and retaining. And so we kind of put our information in those buckets. So as far as recruiting goes, we've done a lot of new things this year with social media. Y'all might have noticed that the job postings look different. We've been doing some employer branding. That was all based on an audit that we did with Laserworks on, you know, best practices in social media. And I want to tell you guys that we have increased our number of followers on Facebook by eight hundred people, our number of followers on Instagram by four hundred, Twitter's gone up two hundred and ninety-three, and then we've started to really actively use LinkedIn, and we've increased twenty-five hundred. So that's pretty good. So I feel like our following is getting higher, more people are getting their eyes on our branding and our social media. The other thing we did was Springboard, which is a Power Schools product, and that allows us to put out our job postings on Indeed, LinkedIn, and then other national platforms. So we've been able to recruit outside of Texas by using Springboard, and that's been very positive as well. A third recruiting platform that we use is Handshake, and that's a platform that's primarily through universities. So we have a hundred and seventeen universities that automatically will put out our job postings, and then others, if I say everybody in Texas, it'll add them, and they have to go through approval. But an example of how positive Handshake can be is we recently started paying our social work interns. Norm is probably going to talk about that a little bit later. It's a really innovative thing that not a lot of districts are doing, and we got fifteen applicants just off of the Handshake job posting. So Handshake helps us with entry level, interns, student teachers, things like that. We are also being more strategic with our job fairs. So we're starting to keep data on how many recruits we get from each job fair, as well as branching out into job fairs that will fill our areas of high need. So we did twenty-three job fairs, we got three hundred and twenty-two recruits, twenty of those people we hired. And it might be more, because that data is from talent ed, so if they put job fair, then that's, that's where it came from. There might have been somebody who didn't actually leave their information and then still came through from the job fair, but we do have twenty confirmed hires. As far as strategic attendance, we've grown our job fair presence to include historically black colleges and universities. We've expanded to the Valley to look for those bilingual teachers, so we recruit down in the Rio Grande Valley. And then we've been going to the Veterans and American Legion job fairs as well. We've also expanded to job fairs that aren't just for teachers. Tanya and I did a nursing job fair at ACC, and that was really enjoyable. And it's kind of nice, because a lot of people don't think about working for a school. They just think teachers, but, you know, we have nurses at each of our campuses. This banner that you see on the slide is our new banner that I produced for our job fairs. I wanted to highlight some of our awards. So I put on there, of course, our best high schools, US News and World Report for Circa, our best places for working parents that Dr. Lee got us this year, and then the best communities for music education. And I noticed that that draws a lot of people, like I had all of the music candidates coming to us. Of course, we didn't have any openings at the time, but, you know, we're building buzz about Bastrop ISD. So the next bullet is Spirit Exchange Education Services. Another way that we've branched out in recruiting is that we are hiring, visiting international teachers on J-1 visas, and to date, we have eight of them in the works, three for sure. I'll tell you two quick stories, I don't want to take up all your time, but one of them is Barbara Cunningham. Have I told you all about her yet? Okay, she's the coolest visiting international teacher. She's, she came from Canada with her horse. She's a barrel racer. She chose us, like she reached out and said, "I want to teach in Bastrop because I'm a barrel racer." She's renting a ranch down in Red Rock, and she's going to be teaching at Red Rock Elementary. She's an amazing teacher, we're so lucky to have her. Who knew barrel racing could, you know, recruit people? And then another, yeah, I know, it's great. And so then we also have two teachers coming from the Philippines. Sofia Capa's going to teach geometry at Bastrop High School, and then Bert Magno is going to teach at Emile Elementary. They're going to share a house. And Sofia is bringing her husband with her. Martin Conrady is renting his house in Tahitian to them. So that's going to be really neat that they'll be able to live together. And so we get these teachers for three to five years, so it's a good investment. We are not paying any additional fees, except that we have to pay for their Visiting International Teacher Certification through TEA, and I think that runs us roughly, it's like twenty-five dollars. It's not, it's not a big fee. We're paying them the regular teacher rate, I probably will. I probably will be asking people for help with things like housing, because I think that is one of our biggest challenges. But we're hoping that will help us fill some of our hard-to-fill positions like physics and chemistry. I mean, these are people who have 15 years of teaching experience, so it's pretty exciting. All right, what else do we have? University Student Outreach. So we started doing resume expresses with, uh, Prairie View A&amp;M, Texas State and UT, where I go out and I just do resume reviews for students who want to look at their resume or mock interviews. And we've actually recruited quite a few people out of that, people who didn't realize, "Oh, I could be a teacher," or, "Oh, I could do this at a school district." And so that's one way that we are reaching out to the university. We also have our Grow Your Own program in conjunction with CTE. So we have produced a couple of, uh, high school students who have their educational A2 certification right out of high school. I believe we hired them, yes. So, uh, that's a really good way that we can continue to grow our own. And then we have a new grant. So one, one of the things is with our, oh, I skipped student teachers. So we have had, um, about eight student teachers each semester. And last year, we lost two of them, or this spring, we lost two of them, because they wanted to do a full residency and we didn't offer it. So I wrote a grant for TEA called Texas Strategic Staffing, and we were awarded it. So we will be able to create with Texas State and Region 13, a residency program for those student teachers. So they'll be able to be with us and be paid in the fall and in the spring. And hopefully, we won't lose, because they were two really good elementary teachers that we, we could have used. My last bullet here is community outreach. Diana and I partnered with I Teach, and we offered training to anyone. Karen Trevino put it out for the whole community, and we had people come and just talk about, "Well, what does it take to become a teacher, and how can I teach help?" And then I'll turn it over to Diana, and she'll talk about our work with District of Innovation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm honored to be here. So I am going to touch base on District of Innovation first. May of last school year, we revised our plan. You know, we have to do the, the required meetings and get it in place. And it gave us more flexibility to hire individuals that are working towards their certification. So to date, we have a total of 202 teachers hired under the DOI plan, which is what we call it. 86 of those are brand-new hired this summer. And the, the candidates hired under District of Innovation are given an addendum with their contract that gives very specific expectations by the district. But in addition to that, the Human Resources Department and our campuses help to provide additional support for these individuals. So we're really excited. That's allowed us to fill positions that we might not have been able to fill otherwise. So super excited about the DOI plan. I also wanted to talk about, as far as recruiting, uh, a lot of our new hires are recruited through our substitute program. So we bring individuals in as substitutes. They're maybe people that have never worked in a district before, they want to try it out. And, uh, it's, it's very beneficial. So our substitute manager, Cassandra LaFuentes, started with us the year COVID hit. So March of 2020, she was brand-new. So imagine coming into a department, being brand-new. She's been great. Um, this past school year, she onboarded 161 new substitutes to the district in addition to those that we have already. She held, we, our goal is to hold weekly orientation, so that, you know, if, if you missed last week, we will do it next week. She held a total of 35 new hire sessions last school year. And, and again, we, we're going to continue to do those weekly. We, for this school year, we host Welcome Back. So it's a way for our existing substitutes to come back in, to hear what our updates are. We are hosting six. This year, we have Teddy Coleman coming in. It's, I think, very important for our substitutes to hear the same safety initiatives that we have in place that, the entire district here. So he's been really great to come out to these sessions and prevent, present. I attended the first, lots of questions, great questions that we probably wouldn't have thought about otherwise from their perspective, because things look a little bit different. They, so we, in addition, the last two years have started doing outreach in the community as far as like attending, um, campus events. We'll go to meet the teacher, we go to athletic events, set up, have our banner, pass out flyers, talk to parents. What better opportunity than to have the same schedule that your, your, you know, kiddos have? So we are continuing to do that. And then we're really excited about the pay increase. I think that that'll make a difference. You know, last year, you had to work, we had the increases 30, after 30 days, after 60 days, if you worked Monday and Friday. But if you looked at just the starting rate, that didn't bring a lot of people in. If I knew I wasn't going to be able to work 30 days or 60 days. So our goal is, um, with this new pay to bring those people in, that might not have come in otherwise if they're not able to work. Maybe I can only work every Monday. And, uh, so we're really excited about that new opportunity.
Okay, next bucket, equip.
Back to the clicker, Jen, sorry.
Oh, and I went too far. I'm just jinxed when it comes to clickers. Okay. Our mentor program is really strong, and it's just about the same as it has been. And that is that you, if you are new to the district, you get a mentor for two years. Even if you're a veteran teacher, if you're coming from Canada or somewhere out of state, we'll give you a mentor. Um, and it's been really successful. It has expanded. I feel like it really helps retention. The surveys, uh, demonstrate that, and so we're continuing that. We also do monthly campus visits in the fall. They're very low-stress. We feed the, all of the new hires. Everybody can come, no matter what position you're in. And we just ask things like, "Does your badge work? Do you need to put in a technology ticket, but you don't know how?" We're trying to take some of the load off of the teachers and the other new hires as they come onboard. And then Upskills University was really successful this year. We did two of them. So we did Upskills University 1 and then 2.0. And I partnered with Texas State, Hartwell, Texas Teachers of Tomorrow, um, and I Teach, oh, and Grand Canyon University. And we all did a virtual session, and we invited everybody, community members as well as staff members. And we talked about master's programs and what do you, how do you become a principal if that's what you want to do? Alternative certification programs. If you're a paraprofessional, you don't have your bachelor's, how you can do that. And then I closed it out with some of the ways that you can fund your education if you need to. And that was really positive, and I'm still in conversation with a lot of those people. And we have quite a few staff members who are planning on becoming principals now, after talking to Texas State about that. And then one of the fun things that we do, that I think I've talked to you about before, is Duolingo, and it just continues to grow. And my story for this slide is Aaron Preston. Okay, um, I never know whether to call him Aaron or Aaron, because the way he spells his name. But anyway, Aaron Preston, he's one of our speech-language pathologists. And his team won the Taco Cabana Breakfast, which is perfect, because they meet once a week and they eat breakfast. And all they do is they get on their phones and they practice Duolingo. Like it makes them do it once a week. And so, um, they had the highest points that month, and so they won the Taco Cabana. So there he is presenting his Taco Cabana to his team. Okay, and then I'm going to, that's it for me. I'm going to turn it back over to Diana to talk about onboarding.
Tag teaming, this is what we do in the office, so. Okay, so I wanted to touch base briefly on our automated onboarding. So, and I know I saw Randy here a little bit ago. His department was instrumental in getting us set up our onboarding for our new hires completely. They do everything electronically. And so this, their automation started May of '22. So we went a full school year where, you know, every, so for example, when we hired in the past, we had to manually email payroll and benefits and all, all the people. And so that is not something that needs to happen. Now we put in a ticket and say to technology, "We hired this person." And there's an email that goes out, benefits, technology, PMS, digital learning, like all of our departments. It, it has, it's in real time, so it makes things so much faster than it has been in the past. New employees are able to get access to their platform. So you hire a new teacher, and they need access to this and that. And it, it, it used to take a bit longer, but now with automation, the principal or supervisor gets an email. You know, here are the things that this person needs. You either, you know, approve, or if there's anything that we need to add. So again, thank you to Randy and his team for helping us get that in place. And then, so TTest. So this is, TTest focuses on providing continuous, timely, informative feedback to educators so they can improve their practices. We use responsive learning to roll out our TTest training to all of our new hires and existing staff. So the new hires have to take an initial three-hour training, just to kind of go over the entire process. Existing staff annually have to take a one-hour refresher. That is actually going out to them tomorrow morning. I'm sure everybody will be super excited. But it gives and explains all the components of TTest and how educators can prepare. And then we feel like after completing this course, educators will be ready to confidently meet their TTest goals. And so the last bullet on this slide is probably what I am known for more than any other. So this is our compliance training. It goes out through Vector. People don't necessarily recognize me, and then when I introduce myself, they're like, "Oh, you're the Vector person." I, and I am. Um, so this is our annual compliance training that every district employee has to take. So we issue it. It used to be a, a platform called Safe Schools. It's now called Vector. That training went out July 3rd. It goes out July, that first Monday or whatever of July, um, every year. And the due date's August 31st. And the reason why we did that is because we used to issue it when you, when you came back to school. And then imagine being, "I'm back, I'm preparing for students." You know, I just trying to get back in the swing of things that I have to remember to wake up in the morning and not at 10 o'clock, right? Because I'm on summer hours. And so we had a feedback that asked if there was a way for us to issue it earlier. And so you, you kind of have both options. You can do it during the summer, but then we make the deadline late enough that if you're one that wants to do it when you're on contract, you absolutely have the ability to do that. And so this, uh, training helps meet all local, state and federal training requirements, different types of things. Child abuse, how to report it. Um, there's, you know, bloodborne pathogens, seizures, ju- just, it, pretty much anything. And I think all of you should have gotten a link to do a piece of the training, so you get to see a little bit of what our, it's not quite what we have to do, but you, you see at least the system, and it, it's very easy to use, so.
And Diana's done a great job of organizing and streamlining that. I mean, it's something we all have to do, and it's really important, but it just feels like a lighter load than it has been in the past, because she's worked really hard on that. And none of it's redundant, and it's all very useful. Okay. Our next bucket is retain, and, um, I wanted to talk real quick, what, before I start on retention, about your little cups in front of you. These are what we give to our new hires when they come. And I wanted you guys to enjoy a little bit of BISDB bling, so these cups are for you guys as well. So that's kind of another way that we equip them, because it's got their little badge thing, and it's got a, you know, screen cleaner and all the good things. So that's, those cups are for you. Okay, so in order to retain our staff, we really focus on their feedback. And, um, I'm currently reading an HR book that talks about, you know, really, that should happen all the time. Like the more your door is open, the more honest feedback you're going to get. If it becomes this big formal thing that's only once a year and whatever, it's, you know, it's, it's better to do it all the time. So we are doing it all the time, but we do in the spring, go out to half of the district each year, and, uh, we do stay interviews. And they're somewhat informal, because the questions just roll. And as people come into the workroom, and again, we feed everybody, they just answer the questions, and we take notes, and we look at trends. If you've been in the district for more than 20 years, I offer a one-to-one stay interview, and those have been really successful. So I come out to you, and, um, we just ask the same questions, and I get their expertise and their insight on what it's been like to work for BISD for 20 or more years. And then we do a social media spotlight, and we've gotten huge response on Facebook, because those are the people who they say, "Oh, I remember her, you know, when she was my teacher," that kind of thing. Uh, we also do monthly character trade awards, and we've recently added a digital badge for each of those awards. The principals give them out. They give us the names, and we produce all of the, 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 um, certificate and the digital award. And then I, uh, survey the teachers, the new staff, beginning of year, middle of year and end of year. And interestingly enough, a lot of the things that we put in place have really helped, because I've seen the trend shift from not feeling supported with classroom management and curriculum to that is not what they're asking about anymore. So curriculum and instruction and our MTSS coaches have done a great job of supporting our new teachers with that. They're now saying things like, "I need to differentiate. I want to know how to talk to parents." They're getting more into the details, which means they're well-supported. And then we have a campus retention challenge, which has been just a challenge to look at the data with opening two new schools. But I'm happy to say that eight of our schools met their retention challenge, which means we challenged them, like say their turnover rate was 15%. This year, let's try to do 10%. So they try to lower their turnover rate. And so Mina, Red Rock, Blue Bonnet and Emil, as well as CCI, CCH, Circa and Gateway all met their retention challenge this year, which is great, right? Especially with all the growth and everything else, that it is challenging. And then what I'm finding, when I look at our retention data, is that because we've been really good about, um, keeping our compensation and our pay up with districts that are around us, they used to all say that they were leaving because of pay. Now they're leaving because closer to home. So, you know, I don't, there's, I don't know what we can do about that, and we'll just keep trying to make this the very best place to work so they don't mind driving a little bit further. But I think that's a very positive thing. All right, team building and district culture. You have two little things in front of you. We're doing this right now. We're doing the historical bus tour, which if you haven't been on it, I invite you to come. It's really fun. We're doing it on August 1st, and we'll give you a box lunch. You get on the bus. And then Robbie from the Historical Society drives us around and tells us all about all the cool buildings downtown and all the neat things that have happened in Bassdrop. And then you could also get into the Farm Street Opry for free on August 3rd. How many of y'all have been to the Farm Street Opry? Thank you, Kelly. Come on, y'all. It's super fun. It's just like the, everybody out here, y'all need to go to the Farm Street Opry. It's just like the Opry in Nashville. They have music and then jokes and things like that. It's, they think George Strait is new country, though, so just be prepared, okay? It's going to be Everly Brothers and things like that. But it's a wonderful time. And so Kathy Danielson offers, anyone who has a BISD badge or this little flyer can come and, and go for free on August 3rd. We also had really popular hikes, and there's the BES trivia team. We did some trivia nights. And so we're trying to build our culture. Of course, we have a campus culture on each of our campuses. But we, I feel like Bassdrop has a lot to offer, and we like to have our new staff enjoy some of the neat things about Bassdrop. All right, I think that's it for me.
And I, I do have to say, I have a fascination with the bus tour. I've gone twice. I plan to go this year. I've, I've, I live on Pecan Street. I've lived there for 30 years. And, and so this, I take notes now, and I drive, when my kids are with me, I'm like, "Hey, did you know that that house?" And they're like, "Okay, Mom." So I could probably give the tour at some point. Okay, so, uh, the last bullet that I have on this slide is the transfer portal. So we posted new positions for the 23-24 school year on February the 13th. So that was the, the first time that principals, much earlier than we've done it in the past. And campuses could begin making recommendations on March the 1st. And so what we talked to principals about was make sure that your staff know, because as we know, campuses were leveling out a little bit. We had some that were losing positions as we were opening up the new school. So make sure if you have staff that are interested in moving, that they start applying for these positions right away. We have an internal application that's very simple for our staff to fill out. And, again, the, so the transfer window for staff to move was from March 1st, from that first day you could hire, until June the 8th. And so principals could, you know, hire and, and, or interview and hire teachers from other campuses. And so we allowed the moves to happen organically initially. Like we didn't, we have this transfer portal. We had planned to have, like, teachers in this portal that needed to be placed that, you know, as, as one campus lost 10 teachers, what are we going to do with these 10 teachers? Ultimately, the transfer portal opened up on March the 31st with only 14 teachers remaining to be placed. And of those 14, there were only three that I ended up having to make phone calls to principals and say, like, "I have this teacher, this is what they're interested in." So the rest found positions, and they are where they want to be. And even the three, it was like, "Okay, talk." And even the three, it was like, okay, talk to me about why you haven't applied. What are you looking for? Where can I get you? And we made that happen. So I was really excited on April 18th to be able to email all of our principals to say it's closed, transfer portal's closed. You can start hiring anybody that you want to. So really, it was only open for 10 business days, which is amazing when you look at the number of teachers that needed to move from one campus to another. So to date, we've hired 135 new teachers for the 23-24 school year and we have 52 teacher openings, which is much lower than it has been at this point in years past. I think that's it. Oh, I have to click. Oh, goodness. Okay, so that's still me. Okay. So we added an additional staff member this summer. Joseph Swigert is our new employee services specialist. So we already have this position. We split it. They are alpha split, A through K, L through Z. They do all things, anything certification. So if a teacher needs certification, they would ask for that as we onboard our maintenance staff. If a plumber has a license and we need that, they're going to ask for those types of things. Fingerprinting. Joseph Swigert is our new employee. He is just getting out of the military and was doing recruiting and human resources in the military. So we're really excited to have him join us. And the biggest piece of that was to help us onboard our custodial maintenance and grounds. But again, they'll alpha split and touch pretty much every employee other than the substitutes. And then, so talking about that, our manual trades, which is our custodial maintenance grounds. We have started, if you've been on our website, we're posting those jobs. We had our very first onboarding orientation specifically for that group last Thursday. We had about 12 people in the room. And so as of this Monday, so today's only Tuesday, yesterday, it's been a long week, right? They, we have 10 custodians that are Bassdrop ISD custodians. And I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but we still have quite a few that are actually working for the company we contracted with. And so those individuals have all been applying. We've uploaded them for fingerprints. I know it seems odd. They should have prints already. They have contracted prints. It's different for ISD when you come on as a full-time employee. So we've started that process. They've all gotten their fingerprint pass. Many of them, the majority of them are fingerprinted already. And we are having our first like big session with that group on August the 7th. And so those are your people that are currently working for our contracted company that will come in and they will already have prints. Their new hire packets are sent to them. It is a new experience. Not many of them have, you know, email addresses and/or access to computers. So we've provided that when we have orientation. We have computers set up. We have people there available to translate, to answer questions. And so it looks a little different than a teacher or paraprofessional onboarding, but we are, you know, getting right where we need to be and getting them ready so that on, so on August 7th, which is, they're, they are Bassdrop ISD employees on that day. We're having first thing in the morning, an orientation, how to clock in and out, you know, just all the things that you would need to know. But we're really excited because behind the scenes, most everything's happened already. We just need to get to that point where they come to their training and they're ready to get started. Hit the ground running. We're excited. So hiring 101. This was new this year and I was oddly excited about it. This was an opportunity for us to get in front of our administrators, so your principals, assistant principals, directors, and to go over everything, hiring from beginning to end. How to post a position, what we're looking for. So we had our first session late January. And then we, we did ask all principals to bring at least one assistant principal with them so that they, when they take their much-needed break over the summer and there's hiring is continuing the entire summer. And so we, like I said, went over everything as far as district expectations from A to Z in that. And we will also be doing this hiring 101 probably annually, but we are for sure going to have the same type of training for our new managers and supervisors as we bring on our custodial maintenance and grounds staff. So we're definitely going to get them all situated and ready to go. And then just really quickly, my last bullet as far as orientation. So we talked about orientation for grounds, maintenance, custodial. We offered this summer eight sessions for our teachers and paraprofessional staff. They, you can completely onboard and do everything online without being required to come in. But we want to be available to answer questions, to go over things. Some people like face-to-face. So we do four in-person and four virtual. We didn't, we don't have a lot of signup, but we, you know, we get a small, yeah, I would say more than a handful, but each session we have people that come in, ask questions. So I just wanted to share that as well.
All right, I'm going to wrap up real quickly on some of the other stuff. Staff compensation. I want to thank you guys for the increases that you have provided for our staff, our teachers and paraprofessionals, the 5% and all others 3%. So the first paycheck went out July 15th and so there's lots of questions on, is this correct? Is that correct? So I just wanted to kind of talk to, because you guys probably hear that. So I wanted you guys to have some information. Nobody that comes into the district makes more than an existing employee, whether that be a teacher, director, paraprofessional. Teachers are on years of experience. They all receive 5%. So if you taught last year, whatever your salary was, it's calculated in our system called Skyward and it's 5%. If you're at 27 years, let's say you make, I don't know the number off the top of my head, like you're making $60,000, you're going to get 5% on that. Someone that's coming in at 27 years, they may not get that same 60. And so there's a little bit of conversation out there about these new people are coming in making more than we do. I want to assure you, nobody does. It's all calculated. I calculate every other position outside of teachers and we use a Tasby formula. We use, and that's driven by years of experience. And we have pay boxes. So every position's in a different style of box. We have administrative boxes, paraprofessional boxes, and support services boxes. Now we have manual trades. So we do the calculation. I look in that pay box. If someone's coming in at 15 years of experience and I have someone with 15 years of experience, that's how much they're going to make. They're not going to make any more than that. And so sometimes we have our employees ask, I don't think I'm being paid correctly. I had an art facilitator come last week because she didn't under, they don't understand it's different than working in industry. We don't give pay increases during the year. It's not on reaching goals or anything like that. And so they only get what the board approves every summer. I don't get anything in December. I don't get anything in the spring. So we do a lot of explaining in HR about how pay works. It's probably the hardest part of the job and the toughest to explain. So I just wanted you guys to have some information as teachers are going to start coming back. They're going to be looking at their pay. The first paycheck went out July 15th with the new increases. So in case there's any questions, y'all can call me. I'll talk to anybody that has a question about pay and we're happy to sit down and explain it to them. Jen already talked about our Blazer Works audit. Y'all, that was a game changer for us with just how an applicant goes through the application process, what all our social media looks like, right on down to the colors that we should border our pictures in, the titles that we should use when we are posting positions. So it was a game changer for us. It was an outside company that doesn't just strictly do education. They do marketing, you know, nationwide. So we felt that it was a really good use of our money to try to change our look for advertising. You guys are familiar with Teacher Support Council. We organize all of that through HR. Every other month, we meet with different groups of teachers. They send questions to me. I take it to Cabinet. It's sorted by department. Cabinet provides the answers. We meet with teachers and minutes go out to the campuses for them to review every single thing that we've discussed. And so I wanted you guys to know a little bit about that process. Principal interviews, these are the ones that we've had so far. CCHS, we had early. Then we brought on Camino Real and Colony Oaks. They were our new campuses. Colony Oaks stole the BIS principal, so we had to hire for that one. Cedar Creek Middle School, Dan Brown resigned and we have replaced that principal with Risa Cooper. And tomorrow I have Red Rock interviews for that principal position. So we keep busy with principal interviews. And then the last thing is I do campus visits. And that's not necessarily just for human resources. I go to the campuses twice a semester, all of them. And I talk about all the departments I supervise. So it's athletics, human resources, student services, and technology. It's super informal. There's no heavy agenda. They do most of the talking. I take notes. I find out what's going right, wrong, what do they need to be supported on? And then I take all that down. Then I come back and start doing my homework. So if it's a technology issue, I get with Randy. If it's athletics, I get with Elliot. So it's really just about supporting them, finding out what we're doing well and where we need to improve. At the end of the year, I did a survey to our principals on this process because it was new. What did you like about the process? What would you like different and how can I improve that? Because it's all about supporting them every single day. So that is the last of our long presentation. Are there any questions?
Duolingo. We've got some buzzwords going on. What if and duolingo. And hearing a little bit, we're going to talk about unlimited too.
We're going to get you the app for duolingo.
Oh, it's an app. Okay. You're probably safe for not getting me. But I have noticed on social media, great job. I like the postings, the style of postings, LinkedIn, Facebook. They're really eye-catching and stuff like that. A lot of great proactive efforts here. So thank you all very, very much for what you do.
So they do great work. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving along here. Looks like the police report, Police Department Report is for information only, as well as the operations report. Now we'll move into the Communications and Community Relations Report. Bond Programs Update 2021 and 2023. Dr. Kristi Lee, our Deputy Superintendent.
Hello. Okay, well, let's talk about 2021 bond and the 2023 bond just briefly. And then Josh is going to give you some great information about our 2023 bond. So I'm happy to bring this to you tonight and appreciate the opportunity. So what is the status of our current 2021 bond projects? The major projects in progress are of course our new schools at Camino Real and Colony Oaks, the two-story addition at Mina, Cedar Creek and Red Rock, those parking and drive improvements, all of the other elementary school admin and vestibule renovations, both of the intermediate schools admin and vestibule renovations, and then of course Bassdrop High School. Projects that are essentially already completed, the work at Cedar Creek High School, adding all of those interior classrooms, and of course, the roof replacement at Emile. And we're going to dive into some of these in picture form, this bulleted list. So at Camino Real and Colony Oaks, we finalized the mascots that you all approved, those designs, and I'm going to show you that here in just a minute. All of the furniture fixer and equipment, that started being delivered last week and is continuing this week for both schools. The library vendor will be setting up the last week of July. So all of the shelving has arrived and has been placed where it's supposed to be in the library. And the library book vendor will be coming to then put all of those on the shelves in the way that they're supposed to be, along with our library media specialists. All of the graphics for the campus, so the wayfinding, what's in the admin at vestibule places, as well as at the restrooms, all of that has been finalized. And everything's been installed except for the restrooms and that should happen in the next week or so. Architects have been walking the campus and doing their punch list. This week, we had a significant logistics planning meeting with departments all across the school district to make sure that we are ready, that we are thinking about all of the small details so that come August 16th, we are ready for little children to come and occupy those buildings. Administrative teams will, we found out today, will get into their office spaces this week. Teachers will not be allowed to come, but the fire marshal has said that principals and their admin teams can get into their offices and be working, which will be a significant benefit to our two principals at Colony Oaks and Camino Real. And then finally, I also found out today that the signal at 812 is being installed. So those poles have gone up towards the end of this week. The arms will be installed and by next week, possibly even at the end of this week, flashing lights will be going at the entrance of our school. So here are the logo designs and even the names. So at Camino Real, it's the Falcons and that is Flaco. That is Flaco. And then for Colony Oaks, it's Cody the Cougar. So there, we are all very excited about seeing all of this branding happen. The PTA is going to be putting out t-shirts and pencils and folders, I'm sure, all kinds of things to help us with that. So this is kind of hard to see, but I wanted just to give you an overview essentially of both schools. Some of the things that I've already talked about that are happening. If you've driven out to either school, the biggest thing you'll notice is the paving, the asphalt paving, the driveway, the parking spaces. The playgrounds are in, the grass is in, so it's really starting to come alive and look like a school. So this is the front of Camino Real. Those poles off to the left of that image are going to hold up the canopy for students to wait under. That, the dirt in the front that you see there, that will be replaced with grass. There's one picture of a playground that's being installed. And of course, Colony Oaks looks very similar, except it's not blue and green in the front. It's different shades of green. This is one of the hallways, but it's an example of the four different kinds of hallways you'll find. Yellow, green, red, and blue, I believe. And this is the very grainy picture of 812 that I got just today, my cellphone picture. And this is Colony Oaks. And as you can see, that's that amazing parking lot. It's a little strange that the parking lot is bigger than the school, especially in this, in this image. But we have lots of teachers that are going to be coming to work there and we need lots of space. This is a picture of the gym. Camino Real will look very similar, except the ceiling is blue. Here at Colony Oaks, it's green. And this is looking down onto the front entry and the library. You can see all of those shelves that have arrived and are ready to be put in their spot. Actually, they have been already. This is an older picture by about just a few days. So let's move on to Mina. Again, this is an overview. Walked this campus just today and it looks fantastic. We went into, if you'll look at this diagram on the lower right, Building C, and that's the existing building that's closest to Farm Street. So we're doing some light renovation in there, turning the office area into classrooms, as well as doing some painting in the hallways and in all the classrooms. But it's giving it just a little bit of a refresh, which is very nice. As you guys know, in the 2023 bond, there'll be a Phase 2 of Mina. So we weren't doing a lot of renovation to Buildings C and B because eventually those will be torn down and a new school constructed. So there it is. You can see the new parking lot is coming along nicely. The playground is installed there with that green canopy. And Ms. Allen said today that she was very excited because they haven't had a canopy over the playground. And that will be, provide just some much-needed shade and a little bit cooler by maybe, I think, 15 or so degrees, which is, which is awesome. There's another picture of that. And this is one sample of what the hallway looks like. The color scheme in Mina is primarily gray, but then you'll have these accents of blue, green, yellow, and red. Onto Cedar Creek Elementary. This is that beautiful 15-mile-long drive that we installed to help with stacking and with just the flow of traffic. And that has been completed. And then at Red Rock, you'll see where I've designated with arrows. That's where the parking and drive improvements are happening, but it's not completed yet, still in progress. At Blue Bonnet, Cedar Creek, Emile, Lost Pines, and Red Rock, those administrative entry designs have been completed and pricing is underway. We've selected the interior finishes just recently with principals. Those renovations are set for the summer of 2024. And at our intermediate schools, I was at Bassdrop Intermediate School today just checking out their new office location. They, the staff over there did a great job of getting out of their admin spaces so that as soon as this summer is ended, American Constructors will take over and they will start renovating that space. So both at BIS and CCIS, they have a new office location. They've met with both technology and with our police department to ensure that we have some security measures in place there. So a temporary wall and door will go up in the new office location so that we can, can start school right on time. The actual admin renovation for the intermediate schools will happen early September. That's when it will start. We're going to get schools started, get parents and students used to the new office location, and then we'll start that add- and then we'll start that admin renovation. At Bassdrop High School, for Prop A, you may have noticed the slab for the new two-story was just poured this morning, and it's looking great. There are select corridors and classrooms that have been painted, as well as interior renovations in progress, such as wiring, tech, technology-related items. Bathrooms in the main building, I cannot tell you how amazing, how exciting it was to see a bathroom. But at Bassdrop High School, it means a lot. It's a beautiful new bathroom. They've done one and are working on a second one in the main building. The gymnasiums have been repainted and striped. Our softball permit has been received, and our baseball permit is still pending from the county, but we hope that'll come any day now. And then on Prop B, the sports center renovations are in progress. The paint, athletic flooring, locker rooms, a new shower tile, all of that good stuff. We also received just yesterday our building permit for the new athletics building, so we'll be moving forward with that as well. So here are some pictures. This is before this slab was poured. So as you can see, that dirt areas where that two-story renovation will happen, and then as of today, you can see. Very exciting. This is work on the interior, just a classroom being built, and a little bit of the paint in the hallway, giving it a little bit of a refresh. This is the striping and the paint in the big gym. So you can see, it really brightens up that space. And then Coach Greedle indicated that the, what do you call them? The pads on the end, on the, underneath the goals, that those will be replaced as well. Down in the weight room area, the sports center, this is just a couple of areas that have been renovated, and this is all in progress. So let's talk now about the 2023 bond. We are gearing up. We approved our architects, as you know, you took care of that for us. We had our bond rating calls last week, as well as due diligence. We are going to be issuing approximately 232 million next month, and we expect to issue the balance February 2026. And Josh will talk about all of that. So these are the projects that we're looking at to address growth initially, because this is what's most important to us. Getting started on the next two elementary schools, the Cedar Creek High School Classroom Addition, the conversion of both of our intermediate schools into middle schools, and finally, our Operations Center, where it will house our maintenance warehouse, custodial, and our police. And so looking ahead to the first day, we are busy. Well, I mean, I'm not personally, but Bill Hanson and his team are very busy cleaning and preparing our buildings for students and teachers. He's doing a great job of managing all of that. Move-in day for teachers at our three new schools is August the third, and we are recruiting community volunteers. We appreciate the Chamber, once again, for stepping up to the plate and reaching out to their members to secure us some volunteers to help out. Teacher in-service begins August the seventh, and school starts August 16th, which I will remind you is now 28 days away. And we will be scheduling ribbon cuttings for both Camino Real, Colony Oaks, as well as Mina, because they have, you know, essentially a new building as well. We'll wait and get schools started, and then we will set those ribbon cuttings so that we can get all of our families to participate in that as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions about either 2021 bond projects or 2023, if you have them.
Any questions from the board?
Just one quick question. The middle schools and those renovations, I didn't see anything about those in the presentation.
For 2021? The 2021 bond? So the, we were intending to do the middle school admin renovations at the same time as we did the intermediate school admin renovations, but there isn't any extra space at those campuses to create a new office, a new safe office. So we, we made the decision to postpone that till next summer to be less disruptive to the students and teachers. And our team at American Constructors has assured us that they'll be able to complete that work in the summer. So they'll start as soon as school is out, and they'll finish it before school starts. And, and if I can, just take, just a second. I want to not only thank the, the three principals who are opening new buildings, they're doing an outstanding job of thinking about all the things that it takes. So Kristy Kaismore and Dr. Lozano and Emily Allen, they're doing an outstanding job. I also want to thank our team at American Constructors, because those, I think both Barry and I feel that there is invested in this process, as we are in making sure that our buildings are ready to go for our kiddos. And the other, I wanted to tell this quick story. I went to Bassdrop Intermediate, as I said earlier, and I want to give a shout out to our CNI team, because there were ladies over there packing and unpacking curriculum. Some of them were fortunate to be inside the building in an air-conditioned classroom, but there were several who were in the gymnasium today, all day, unpacking boxes and getting the, everything sorted to send to our elementary schools. And so our CNI team is just doing some outstanding work, so I really appreciate that.
Kristy, on the middle schools, we are starting the weight room. We're doing some of those construction projects, or getting started.
We're doing the design work right now, but the construction is.
Right, because I don't want you to think that everything got pushed to the summer. It's, we're still moving forward on the things that we can do with kids there.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
But has there been any talks about the bleachers being replaced?
Yes. When, so we, we went last Thursday, and we toured the athletic area, as well as the main building. And that was one of the first things that we noticed, that the paint looks amazing. Everything looks clean and fresh and bright. The lights look incredible. But that highlights that the bleachers are not as attractive as we would like for them to be. So I think we're both hopeful, we're all hopeful, that there will be, we'll be able to find a way to do something with those bleachers as well during this process.
Okay.
For both of those gyms. Thank you for the question.
Appreciate it. All right, move along to consent agenda here. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Prove the consent agenda items as presented.
We have a motion. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. That'll move us along to our action items here, and that would be the considered adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of Bassdrop Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds in one or more series, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, authorizing the pricing officer to approve the award of the sale thereof in accordance with the specified perimeters and enacting other provisions related thereto. And our presenter here tonight is Josh McLaughlin with BOK Financial Securities. Josh, thank you.
And in first, let me just say, congratulations. Second, your bond attorneys are here tonight, so that long passage that you just read, those are the two guys you can blame. All right?
To give explanation to the audience.
You did much better than I do. I normally read the first two lines and say, okay, that's it, we're done. All right, so again, congratulations. It's always an accomplishment to pass a bond. Normally, you'll see the confetti going, "I actually messed up and sent the wrong file to Ms. Edgar," so instead of seeing the animation, you'll see the confetti just sitting there right now. But again, congratulations. Before we talk about selling bonds, I always like to talk about how the district manages its debt portfolio. By actively managing the district's debt through either refinancing debt at a lower interest rate or, more recently, prepaying bonds prior to final maturity, the district has saved taxpayers more than $46 million in the last 10 years. That's impressive. Pat yourselves on the back. You know this as well as I do, every year, the board adopts two tax rates, not just one, a maintenance operations and interest and sinking fund. Interest and sinking is really just to be used to repay voter-approved bonds, and that's what we'll talk about tonight. Your current INS tax rate is 40.1 cents, and that's what we'll project. But since I'm here, I always like to say, over the last four years, your total tax rate has gone down by 18.54 cents. And based upon recent legislation, it's going to go down double digits next year. I'll let Ms. Edgar give you the good news at a later date. This gives you a look at your current debt portfolio. As of July 1, you have $276 million of debt outstanding. Notice the highest debt year is the current year, 2022-23. This is part of the reason we could sell bonds for no tax rate increase, because your bond payments go down over time. Currently, your bonds are amortized over a 29-year period. Typically, when we go sell new bonds, we do it over 30 years. You're rated AA3 at Moody's and AA- at S&amp;P, fantastic ratings. But keep in mind, every time we go sell bonds, we apply for the Permanent School Fund Guarantee, and we get the automatic AAA rating. This gives you a look at the bond buyer index. It gives you a general indication of what municipal interest rates are doing. You can see, since the start of last year, interest rates are higher due to inflation, the Federal Reserve trying to increase rates to combat inflation. But from an historical standpoint, over the last 22 years, interest rates have been higher almost 75% of the time. So the district is still going to be able to sell bonds at a historically attractive interest rate. The goals of the finance plan are always pretty much the same. The first one is we live up to what we told taxpayers. We told taxpayers there would be no tax rate increase associated with the bond program, and it's been structured so there is no tax rate increase associated with the bond program. Again, we want to maximize your capacity for future installments, because we all know Bassdrop is growing, and this will not be the last bond program you have for the foreseeable future. Look at maintaining a repayment period of 30 years, or yes, for short-term assets. We do not finance those over a 30-year period. We finance those over their useful life. So don't worry about funding a computer over a 30-year period. Again, we will incorporate call features, so you have the ability to prepay debt like you always have. And the last two are just live up to the 50-cent test, which is a non-issue for the district, as well as we will not incorporate capital appreciation bonds into the finance plan. So this gives you a look at the bond program as it stands right now. We are contemplating two sales, the first one in August of 2023, in the principal amount of 232.1 million. The remaining 89 million will be sold in August, or I'm sorry, February of 2026. Now, I will say that is not set in stone. You have the flexibility to move up the sale or delay the sale depending on the needs of the district. So for the purposes of this financing plan, we're going to sell 232 million using a fixed rate of interest this August. Thereafter, we'll come back right now in February 26 to sell the rest. Again, the bonds will be sold without an increase. The bonds will be repaid over a 30-year period, but we'll put a nine-year call on this particular bond sale, so you can prepay those as you need to or refinance in the future. Again, this is how we're going to repay some of these items over their useful life. In terms of interest rates, we've assumed current interest rates as of July 7th plus 25 basis points. Reason I want to give you sort of a little bit of a worst-case scenario, because it's still going to be a couple of weeks before we get to market and lock in an interest rate. For the 2026 bonds, we're assuming 5.5% interest rate. I don't think rates will be 5.5%, but that is the estimate we used at the time of the election, so we're going to keep that elevated interest rate for this purpose. Again, we assume no state funding assistance for the repayment of bonds and a conservative tax collection percentage of 97%. In terms of value growth, with current year, your values are roughly 6.9 billion. And based upon estimates provided by the appraisal district, we think you're going to end up about 8.2. That means over the last 10 years, on average, you've grown a little more than $550 million a year, or 12%. Over the last five years, more like $938 million a year, or over 18%. One of the other things you all know is, under Texas law, the increase in the taxable value of residential homesteads cannot exceed 10%. Anything that goes in that cap, over time, will roll back down to your tax base. Right now, there's over $8 billion in that cap. Okay? So again, we see that future growth that will ultimately hit your bottom line. For purposes of this financing plan, we're only assuming $400 million of growth in each of the next four years. Now, that was based upon current law as of last week. The state legislature met and adopted property tax reform. What that means is the residential homestead exemption, which is currently 40,000, next year will be increased to 100,000. So there will be a tax break for taxpayers. But what that means for the school district is that you'll lose about $700 million of taxable value off your roll. So we've incorporated that. So instead of going to about 8.2 billion, we think you're going to end up pretty close to 7.5. We grow $400 million a year for the next four years, and that would be your tax-based growth. Based upon those assumptions, we would sell this first 232 million at an assumed interest rate based upon current market plus 25 of 4.58%. Net bond payments are just under 458 million. We're repaying roughly 7.9 in the first five years, 13 in the first 10, and almost 34 in the first 15, more than enough to take care of your short-term assets. And the final payment would be February of 2053. Keep in mind, we're structuring annual principal payments. We don't have bullet maturities, it's annual principal payments. So this looks at sort of the total bond program when we throw in the projection of the 2026 sale. But essentially, right now, based upon where we think we're going to come out, we'll be about $57.7 million below the cost originally communicated to taxpayers at the time of the election. I don't get to say that number very often, so $57.7 million below budget at this point in time. This is a eye test. I won't spend a whole lot of time, but for number geeks who want to get into this, just focus on the last two columns, which is your projected INS tax rate. It will stay at 40.1 cents to roughly 2035-36, where we will see a decline. The reason you have declines in your tax, or INS tax rate is we're starting to build capacity for those next bond programs down the road. This also gives you a look at your callable debt after the sale. You'll have roughly $508 million outstanding, $435 million is callable prior to final maturity. Right now, your interest rates are low, so there's not a whole lot of bonds you could refinance at a savings. That said, you can still prepay debt prior to final maturity. So if you think we've been conservative in value growth, the good news is you could take that value growth in excess and start to prepay bonds. The benefit of prepaying bonds versus refunding bonds is you get more bang for your buck. You don't have to pay writing fees, you don't have to pay your financial advisor, you don't have to pay very much. So again, much more advantageous to prepay versus refinance. So tonight, we are asking the board to adopt a parameters order, or consider the adoption of parameters order. This will allow the district's administration to move forward with the transaction should it meet the following parameters, which means we cannot issue more principal than 232.1 million. The maximum all-in interest rate cannot exceed 5.5. The final maturity of the bonds cannot exceed 30 years, and we have one year to get this done. The reality is, we are trying to get this done before August 31st, because in part of the property tax reform legislation, if you get this done by August 31st and have a payment by August 31st, you could potentially get these bonds qualified for additional state funding. We have not counted on that, but that is our goal. We're trying to get these qualified. So with that, we're here tonight. We would hopefully be in a position, as of July 28th, we're ready to go to market. All things being equal, you should receive your money on August 29th. We're going to make our first bond payment on August 30th, so very quick turnaround, but that will get you qualified. I know I went through that relatively quickly. I'll be happy to stop and answer any questions you have.
So why would we not sell all the bonds?
So it's a function of how quickly you can expend it. So as we looked at and we talked to the district, under federal tax law, you must have the unreasonable expectation that you expend 85% of those bond proceeds within a three-year period. Looking at the totality of all the projects you have, it's probably going to take more than three years. than three years. So we try to figure out by project where the good breaking points are. Right now, we said it was February 26 for the next installment. Again, that may move up or may delay depending upon the needs of the district.
Another factor I would add is, as we met with our construction partners, and there were so many bonds that passed in the area, they're just not sure that there's enough construction companies out there with the demand on construction projects, that they can even meet the demand. So that's another reason that we broke it into two pieces. So we went for the things that continue to address growth, number one, as you can see in the, in the recommendation. And then if, in fact, the market changes a little bit, then we can go back again and do it earlier. Like, like Josh said, we're not set in stone that we have to wait till '26.
Hey Josh, just a quick question. And the nine-year call feature that you mentioned, those are both. So you were, you were talking about the 232, but you also mentioned the second. So is that pretty standard in accordance with our rating?
So in terms of the call feature, typically, in the primary markets, investors require 10 years. They'll start, you know, you can go for a short call option. The question is how much penalty will he charge? And really, we found out about nine years is sort of the sweet spot, the lowest call before you start to get penalized by investors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the order authorizing the issuance of Bassdrop Independent School District unlimited tax school building bonds in one or more series, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the award of the sale thereof in accordance with specified parameters, and enacting other provisions related thereto as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. The whole team there appreciates y'all being here tonight. All right, now we'll move on to action item number B. We'll consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and Connections Individual and Family Services. Reyna Ellis, Director, I'm sorry, District Counselor Coordinator, and there's Norma, Norma Mercado, Family and Social Services Coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and board. We are bringing for your consideration an MOU with Connections Individual and Family Services for the purpose of integrating the youth prevention program. These services provided will benefit eligible youth in grades first through, one through 12. Some of the highlights of this include, it's a prevention education and skills training program. They use a curriculum called, called Positive Action. And through this program, our students are offered additional prevention strategies through the use of positive alternatives that will focus on teaching recreational alternatives for youth and families. Our job is to, as counselors and social workers, provide referrals for these services and assist with distribution of consent forms when necessary. Campuses will provide adequate space for these services to be administered to specified classes or groups for Connections to facilitate this program. Traditionally, this is once a week for 30 to 45 minutes in approximately eight to 10 weeks. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you. I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding with Connections Individual Family Services as presented.
All right, I so move. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to action item number C. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and Health and Human Services Commission and provisions of volunteer station for the Foster Grandparent Program. Karen Trevino, our Director of Community Relations, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. The Foster Grandparent Program actually serves a dual purpose. It provides incoming eligible adults who are 55 and older with meaningful volunteer opportunities, while also meeting critical needs of students, especially serving students with either special or exceptional needs. Under this agreement, should you approve it, BISD will provide a written volunteer plan. They will ensure the health and safety of a foster grandparent. They'll conduct site-specific orientation and training, and they'll assign students and a supervising staff member to a volunteer. On the flip side, the Foster Grandparent Program will be responsible for recruiting, interviewing, selecting, and enrolling volunteers for the program. The volunteers will have to meet several standards, including a criminal history check, orientation, ongoing in-service training, and an annual evaluation. The ultimate goal for this is to create person-to-person supportive relationships between students and older adults, where those relationships can develop over time. Our first grandparent volunteer will begin in August, working with our Community Relations Department in an after-school setting, and our hope is that this program will then grow over time to serve a larger number of seniors and students. Are there any questions? No, this is actually an outside organization. We currently do our mentoring in-house.
Gotcha.
Any other questions from the board?
Local foster grandparents, like from the local community?
So the, the overseeing organization is based out of Austin, but our, our foster grandparent that we'll be working with is local to Bassdrop, and so they're hoping to recruit more foster grandparents from the Bassdrop area and grow the program here in town. Well, with that, I would ask that you approve the memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop ISD and the Health and Human Services Commission for provision of volunteer station for the Foster Grandparent Program.
All right, I so move. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Information items, Board of Trustees' calendar of events is for information only. Do we have any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none, meeting's adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening.